Welcome to the Town of Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. This is September 22, 2022. I'm Paul Sample. I'm standing in for Dave Nixon, who is not able to be here today. So I am acting as chairman of the meeting today. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the chairman. Pursuant to Governor Baker's July 16, 2022 signing of the Act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A Section 20, until March 31, 2023. This meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted via in-person and remote participation and shall afford adequate alternative means of public access via Microsoft Teams by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 495-679-708, or join the meeting via online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, and we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue/hearing or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. Looks as if everybody here is pretty familiar with our process, so I don't think I'll go through all of the process. And we can begin by considering the minutes, oh, excuse me. Let's do a roll call vote by the board members to proceed in the manner that I have suggested with respect to remote participation. We'll start with Buck.
Buck votes yes. I'm sorry, James Upson votes yes.
William Grau votes yes.
And Paul C. Sample votes yes.
David R. Thompson, yes.
Randy Potash, yes.
And David H. Veach votes yes.
All right, thank you. All right, I think the first item on our agenda is the minutes from our September 1st meeting. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move approval of the minutes submitted.
Is there a second? Second? All right, very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, and Dave Thompson?
I don't think I can.
Do you need a roll call vote?
Let's do a roll call vote, just to be careful. All right, a roll call vote. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
And Bill?
Bill votes yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And Dave Veach?
Dave Veach votes yes.
And I, Paul Sample, vote yes. Okay, I think we're now ready for our first hearing, which will be presented initially by our permitting, primary permitting coordinator. It was close, wasn't it? Sarah, please, Sarah Clark.
Application number 21-093, Benjamin Howard Emery, care of William G. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Massachusetts, 02650. Owner of property located at 624 Orleans Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 12J Block 18, Lot 10A. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming accessory structure, garage, on a non-conforming lot via the construction of an addition. The existing garage is non-conforming, and it is located 11.7 feet from the north lea butter and 12.7 feet from the western lea butter. The proposed addition will be non-conforming, and that will be located 8 feet from the north lea butter and 1 foot from the western lea butter, where a 25-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 2,532 square feet, 16.4%, and the proposed building coverage is 2,893 square feet, 18.7%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and it contains 15,452 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under master letter law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw. This was continued from January 13, May 26, July 14, 2022, for re-advertising.
I might note, first of all, that there was a slight error in the advertising with respect to a western lea reference, where an easterly reference should have been made. And as a result, there will be a re-advertising of this hearing. But since it's been pending since January, and since we would like to give some feedback to the applicant as to the board's feelings with respect to this concept, we will go ahead with a hearing today and defer a final vote until a continued date. And in the meantime, hear the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill Litchfield here on behalf of the applicant, Howdy Emery, who is with us. Also today is Thad Aldridge of East Southeast Engineering. As the chair indicated, there is a technical glitch in the ad. The legal ad says that the western lea side of the property is at issue, a fact which I missed and Thad brought to my attention. The neighbors, who were the most impacted parties, their attorney, Mike Ford, and you are all very much aware of which lot line it is, so that no one is in fact prejudiced. On the other hand, as the chairman said, the error will require re-advertising, and I spoke with Sarah about that yesterday, as Mr. Sample said. What we would ask is after our presentation, and questions and comments and so forth, that if you would be willing to give us guidance, perhaps a straw vote, that would give us a notion of which way to go. And in the event that you are favorably disposed of granting the relief sought, as the chair said, Sarah will re-advertise for an October 20 hearing. I said Howdy Emery. I should be more formal and say that I represent Benjamin Howard Emery, who was in the check shirt halfway down. Howdy has owned property in this neighborhood, Chatham Port, not North Chatham, in deference to Reggie Erickson, in Chatham Port since 1990. He is a skilled and dedicated woodworker, and he purchased 624 Orleans Road, this current property, two years ago, when he restored a dilapidated but very historic, apparently circa 1730, house. He bought it to do that, which he did well, but also because of the barn as a location for his woodworking shop. You've been out there, and some of you may have been into the shop, and perhaps you looked in the window if you didn't go inside. But he is now relocating full-time, having sold his home in Pennsylvania, and wants to move his woodworking equipment to the woodworking shop/barn and needs more room. So I did want to explain the reason for the delays, because we've never done that officially. They were due to the understandable concerns of the impact of the butters, and we appreciate your having granted those continuances. Although I was not directly involved in negotiations, there were, as I understand it, nine or 10 months of discussions back and forth between Mrs. Miller, who is here in the blue sweater, and Ray Clark, who is here with her, and their attorney, Mike Ford, and Howdy's other attorneys. And they came to what I understand is an agreement satisfactory to all. That is a good thing. It makes your life and all of our lives much easier when neighbors can reach an accommodation. It may not be perfect for all, but this is one that I understand, and Mike Ford is assured, me, is satisfactory to his clients. So I think that we've accomplished a great deal in that regard, and that's important. What we're seeking, and as Thad will show you momentarily, is a 361-square-foot addition to the existing barn. It is close to the easterly lot line, but as you know from having gone out there and have shown on that site, the fence itself, which seems to be the line of demarcation, is set back onto, it's in a trust, but I'll call it Mary's property, onto Mary's property from the actual lot line. Before Thad gets into the presentation of what's there, in case the issue arises, this is not a retail operation or anything similar, but so that you know, a home occupation is an allowed use in the R40 zone. There's no retail sales. This is more of a hobby. He occasionally, I think ordinarily, gives the pieces, tables and the like away, and may occasionally sell them, but there's no retail operation. This is a low-key operation, which complies with the home occupation provisions of our bylaw. Beyond that, we recognize that a foot is close. And I talked early on with Howdy about whether there was any place else, anywhere else in the property, to locate the addition to the barn, and for a variety of convincing reasons, that was not possible. So that's why we're seeking the relief, and I think you will find, we go into the presentation, that there are mitigating factors. If I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to turn it over to Thad to give you sort of a show and tell.
Please do so.
Good afternoon, Thad Aldridge, East Southeast. So the existing barn that's out there today is 12.7 feet from the lot line, much further from the fence, and the proposed addition's going out 11.7 feet in the front to be the 1 foot off the lot line, 16 feet out in the back. This does put the closest point about 4.8 feet from the fence, and this would be decreasing that setback to about 8 feet in the back. The existing barn is a reconstruction, and the proposed addition is going out to the side. The existing tree that will be removed has an incredible amount of heart rot, so it's unfortunately short for this world in either case. Inside, this will give Howdy plenty of room for saws and planers and joiners and all of the other tools that he uses to make quite a few different woodworking pieces. The proposed addition is short, looking at under 10 feet at the far end. And one of the reasons that, and we talked about at great length, coming out the west side towards the house, the existing doors that are there, they could be moved, but putting a short addition out would take away from that character on that western lea side. The building is about 80 feet from Mrs. Miller's building. The proposed addition is about 90 feet from her front door. Fortunately, situated pretty far away, and Mr. Emery has already planted several trees in between to help block everything. If there are questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Thad. Obviously, the handout I gave you has some photographs, and behind the, I guess it's the fourth page for those who are more arboristically inclined than I, I can't tell you exactly what's wrong with the tree, but on pages three and four and five, there are photographs of the problem the tree has, and I understand that regardless of what we do and whether you grant the special permit, that that tree is eventually going to have to come down. It's not even that it makes anybody happy, but it's nonetheless necessary. And the last pages are photographs from the Miller side of the property, which gives you an idea of the setback from Mary's home. So I'll go into the criteria. The first is adequacy of site, including building coverage and setbacks. The site is certainly adequate, notwithstanding that the lot is non-conforming. The site is adequate for a house built almost 300 years ago, and the newer barn, as Thad indicated, it's a reconstruction, notwithstanding the proximity to the sidelines. I think that you can find the site adequate for the 361-square-foot addition. The proximity to the sideline is mitigated by the existing fence, both visually and by the fence being located back from the lot line. As to compatibility of size, while our lot is smaller than some, all of the lots in this part of Chatham Port were originally very, very long and very, very narrow. Some of them go all the way back down to Frostfish Creek, in fact. So some of them are much larger in actual size, 40,000 and 50,000 square feet, but all of the houses are situated very, very close to Orleans Road, except for those which back up to Ryder's Cove. But the houses that you see along Orleans Road are all very close to the street. This house with a footprint of 1,878 square feet and living area of 2,390 square feet is compatible, as is the barn, which is currently, I think, 540 square feet. If you approve the special permit, it will remain compatible. With the addition to the barn, while the addition to the barn, the footprint and coverage increased, but there's no change to the house, of course, and it remains in the mid-range among neighboring properties. I did the calculation on the third sheet of the handout. As to the extent of increase in nonconformity, there are, as Sarah read, multiple existing nonconformities, lot size, street and sideline, frontage, and coverage nonconformities. If you approve the special permit plainly, patently, by its nature, the coverage increases, as does the nonconformity as to the sideline, albeit in a hidden area, which will remain hidden, and I think you can find it to be without substantial detrimental impact. As Thad indicated, the barn is about 80 feet away from the Miller home to the northeast. As to suitability of site, back in the natural environment, the site has been developed for three centuries. If you approve this change, there will be no issue there. Regrettably, as we indicated, the tree will be removed, but that may happen regardless. As to scale, sighting, mass, views, vistas, streetscape, we have a classic full cape, lovingly restored by the applicant after years of neglect. Howdy bought it about two years ago, and it is pretty well-hidden. It's been behind a fence for years, but some of you may know the somewhat unfortunate history. The house was abandoned by a family that had lived there for a number of years, it had water damage, and it was in very, very rough shape. Members of the family died and so forth. In any event, Howdy bought it because of his interest in history and woodworking, and both did, I think, a very admirable job of restoring it. Both the house and the barn are sighted within existing setbacks, and to the minimal degree that they can be seen, because as you can see there, and as you know from having been out there, if you're heading toward town, heading eastbound, you really can't see anything. And if you're heading west, you have to crane your neck very hard to look in back to the right to see the barn. But to the degree that you can see it, I don't think the change will have any impact. The barn will have a classic shed addition, as Thad has shown you, with a small L at the rear and trimmed to match the existing. Given the location, the fencing and the existing vegetative screening, there's no impact on mass, views, vistas, or streetscape. As to compatibility of use, it is a residential use or an accessory use. There is no change in that regard. You know, some people have model train railroads in their basements. Other people have woodworking shops in their barns or garages, and we think this is an appropriate, compatible accessory residential use. As to adequacy of sewage and water, the health agent, the chair will read a letter indicating that the health agent has no concerns in that regard. There's no impact on traffic flow and safety. There's no noise and litter, plenty of utilities. What is at issue, as you know, is whether the proposed small addition to the barn to accommodate Howdy's woodworking hobby is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the current non-conforming structures, plural, in a non-conforming lot. This is a big ask. It's a substantial request. We understand that. When I first spoke with Howdy a year ago, I said, you know, a foot is going to be hard to sell. The more I looked at it and saw where it was, given the vegetative screening, particularly given neighborhood support, particularly that of the most affected impacted neighbors, I think that you can find, notwithstanding that it's a substantial request, that it is not substantially more detrimental. That's a determination made by this board, not by us. But given that the overarching question is whether there is a substantially more detrimental impact on the neighborhood, I think that the letters of support, the fact that a couple of the butters are here today, can be found as strong evidence that this change is not detrimental. Yes, it is obvious that some of the letters were written in sort of a form manner. I wasn't responsible for that. When I do it, I do them so that they don't seem like they're form letters. But nonetheless, I think back to Mr. Freeman, who served in this board for about 20 years, and he always had the assessor's map, and he put a plus or a minus on all the neighborhood letters. There are an awful lot of pluses in this case, a great many, and I think that says a great deal. It can parenthetically be conditioned, as you have the ability to do, conditioned to require retention of a vegetative screen and/or the stockade fence on the easterly side. The fence currently belongs to the butter, but if it falls down, Mr. Emery can be responsible as part of a condition to replace it. And I think if you know the history of this house, the track record of what he has done with it, of rescuing an essentially abandoned property and restoring it speaks well to what will occur if this special permit is granted. I think Mr. Sample may be the only other person in the room, other than Brother Riley, who went to law school. And I didn't pay much attention to law school, and I certainly don't speak Latin, but in criminal law, I apologize, I'm sorry. I forget, Randy, and I know full well that you're a member of the bar, and you do do criminal law. Then you're familiar with two Latin phrases. Malum in se, which means it's bad because it's prohibited because it's bad, and malum prohibitium, which means it's bad because it's prohibited. This is a question of a setback, yes, being bad in not complying with the law, but it's prohibited only to follow the purposes and intent of the bylaw. If you look at the purposes and intent of the bylaw, granting this special permit is in no way detrimental to the purposes and intents of the bylaw, and it is something which will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So in light of the criteria and the plans, notwithstanding the proximity, given neighborhood support, I think that you can find that the proposed small addition on this house in this neighborhood is not substantially more detrimental. We'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, Ms. Potash, my apologies.
Thank you. I'm going to ask for input from members of the audience and online, and before I do that, I would ask if any of the citizens or non-board members participating in the call via the phone only for their last name and the last four digits of their phone number for identification purposes. Having said that, I'll ask if there is anyone in favor... who would like to speak in favor of the appeal or application. And they may speak. Yes? If you would go up to the microphones, because we do have to do that. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
I don't usually need a microphone. It's almost all the people on the phone. I just want to say that I, well, I'm Mary Miller, and I am the abutter. And I am the person probably that would object to this. And I'm not objecting to this. We have been through a long process, as Bill Litchfield said, and that process has brought us both to an agreement. So I would like the board to consider this in a positive way.
Thank you for your input. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Yes, if you would approach the microphone.
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Minor, six seventy-one Orleans Road. Another dimensionally challenged lot in the area. I wrote a letter, and I decided to go the extra mile and come here today to weigh in on a project that I think is good for the neighborhood and good for the community. Briefly, I met Howdy years ago after this board granted, my wife and I, a special permit to build a traditional post and beam shed very close to the property line on our property, with the support of abutters and neighbors. Howdy, having a good nose for woodworking projects, noticed all the delivery activity, I guess, of the six-by-six timbers coming onto the property, pulled in, introduced himself and asked if he could help. And so over a period of time, we finally got around. It's a tedious process, building post and beam structures, I got to tell you. But he helped us raise the structure, kind of an old-fashioned barn-raising event. So from that beginning to today, I have found, and I'd like to share with you, that I think Howdy's a good man and a generous man and happy to be a neighbor and friend. I'm not going to speak to any of the other criteria that was mentioned today, but I would agree that the structure and the addition is hardly visible. And I think, as opposed to being detrimental, I think it's complementary to the neighborhood. So I would urge you to grant a special permit to enable him to practice his woodworking hobby. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your input. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, board. Tim Smith, and I live at six oh six Orleans Road, just someone of Howdy's neighbors. I drive down the stone driveway next to the Miller's property. And I've seen the plans and talked with Howdy. And I feel it's a nice addition on that barn. I don't think it's going to be detrimental to the neighborhood by any means. He'll get good use out of it. And with having the fence around there, you know, the people that are going to see it are most likely going to be myself and two others that drive down that driveway. So I don't have a problem with it. I think it looks good. I think the fence there blocks it, and you won't really see it from the street. It's so far set back off the street. So I hope you guys would look at this and approve this for Howdy, so he can keep with his woodworking. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application?
I see no one else that wishes to speak in favor.
All right, I'll read the correspondence that we've received. Mrs. Miller, would you like me to read your?
No, it's not necessary.
All right. And we have a letter dated April twelfth from John Papalardo of One Capit Way in Chatham. Dear Mr. Nixon, I am writing this letter to express my support of the twelve-foot barn addition at six twenty-four Orleans Road. I, and this is where the form letter comes to play, says in parentheses, either own property in or work in or reside in Chatham. I think in this case, it's probably all three of those. The proposed barn addition will allow Howdy Emery the space for his working tools from the home he just sold in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. And then we have a letter from Linda and Brian Minor. Mr. Minor, would you want me to read your letter?
Not necessary.
All right. And then we have a letter dated August twelfth from Mitchell Sissy and Janet Eggleson Sissy of Williamsburg, Mass. It's a mailing address, but the residence is at six three three Orleans Road, Chatham. I am writing this letter to express my support of the twelve-foot barn addition at six twenty-four Orleans Road. The proposed barn addition will allow Howdy Emery the space for his working tools from the home he just sold in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. That sounds familiar. And then we have a letter dated August twelfth from Sandra Shapiro, J E S Family Investment LLC, with an address of, I believe it's six hundred Orleans Road. Six twenty? Yes. Dear Mr. Nixon, I am writing this letter to express my support of the twelve-foot barn addition at six twenty-four Orleans Road. Proposed barn addition will allow Howdy Emery the space for his working tools from the home he just sold in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. And we have a letter from Allison E. Adams and Peter Collery dated August eighteenth, with an address in Chatham of one oh two Scattery Road, North Chatham. We are the owners of six fifteen Orleans Road in North Chatham. We write in connection with Howdy Emery's request for permission to expand the barn at six twenty-four Orleans Road by twelve feet in order to accommodate his carpentry workshop. We are entirely in support of this request and urge you to endorse it. If you have any questions, we can be reached by telephone at, and it gives an email address and telephone address. And then we have a letter from Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, can I read or?
No, that's fine.
All right, fine. And we have a letter dated August twelfth from Lawrence and Susan Lepard, six four three Orleans Road, North Chatham. I am writing this letter to express my support of the twelve-foot barn addition at six twenty-four Orleans Road. The proposed barn addition will allow Howdy Emery the space for his working tools from the home he just sold in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. And then we have a letter from August twelfth, 2022, from Patricia McCully. The address is six five nine Orleans Road. It's the same form letter we've just heard, but in this case, she checked off resides in Chatham. And we have a letter from Suzanne Rokandella, Rokandella, six five three Orleans Road. Again, the same form letter in support of the application. And we have a letter from Benjamin Nickerson, six six eight Orleans Road. The same form letter expressing his support for the applicant. And I believe that's all of the correspondence we have received. I'll ask if there is anyone either in the room or on Microsoft who would like to express an opinion either against this application or has a specific question.
I see no one that wishes to speak in opposition or has a specific question.
I don't think I see any need for rebuttal on behalf of Mr. Litchfield, at least based on this application so far. So I'm going to ask board members if they have any questions. We'll start with you, Buck.
Buck has no questions.
All right, Bill?
The easement and its shape and length, where did, how did that? Can you give me some history on that?
Well, it was not, and Ray, maybe you could help me, because you were more involved in the negotiations. Mr. Clark, the trustee of the property where Mrs. Miller lives. It appears, and I'm not sure anyone was aware of this, it appears that the driveway for six twenty-four has encroached on the Miller property for a long time. I don't know how long. And one, as I understand it, one of the proposed solutions was an easement. And I think an easement is going to be granted to basically legitimize the use of the parking area and driveway, which has been a part of six twenty, seems to have been a part of six twenty-four. And it will remain the Miller property, but it will be subject to an easement to continue using it as it's been used.
And the fence, was the fence there when, you know, when he purchased the property?
It was certainly there when you purchased the property, which was only two years ago. It's been there for a long time.
It's been there for over twenty years.
It's been there for over twenty years.
Oh, okay.
I think the, I think the neighborhood thought the fence was on the lot line. It isn't. And that's how the use of the property by six twenty-four came into being.
So does the fence come all the way down the length of the easement that's proposed?
Yes, it does.
I saw the fence there.
Well, no, the fence ends back there, where the cursor is.
Yeah, I just, I saw it. I just don't know visually where it ends, you know, I was just kind of curious.
Well, if, it's about halfway down, or it's about, well, that's right where the cursor is. It's at the back of the original section of the house, quite a distance back from Orleans Road, maybe fifty, sixty feet back from Orleans Road.
At least sixty feet back.
The area, as you know, is very heavily vegetated anyway. So the fence does a nice shielding job for the Miller property. The vegetation does a nice shielding job for the world, although, given what Thad showed us as to the, given what Thad showed us as to the appearance of the barn, I'm not sure hiding it is really required.
That's all I had.
Peggy?
I have no questions.
All right, Dave Thompson?
I want to thank Mr. Litchfield for doing a great job of answering all my questions already. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd say the same.
Well, this is really not germane to my decision. I'm just wondering if Mr. Emery had plans to use the tree that they're going to be taking down.
Good question. Mr. Emery, you can't speak from there, but you can tell me, do you have any plans to use that tree for woodworking?
There's a few nice pieces in it.
There are a few nice pieces in there, which he will attempt to salvage.
Very good, thanks.
All right, and Buck, do you have any questions? I already went through you.
I think I said I had none.
That's correct. All right, and I have no further questions. Do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
I move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
And is there a second?
Buck seconds.
We'll do a vote call vote. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Bill?
Bill votes yes.
Paul votes yes.
Dave votes yes.
And Dave Veach votes yes.
All right. We're into our deliberations. Why don't we start with Bill?
Well, I think, you know, given the, you know, the delays that happened with this and then having the opportunity to figure out a way to come up with a solution, which appears to be a positive one for everyone, that I don't see this as being substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, and I'll support it.
I will, I will note that what we're doing here is taking a straw vote. So we'll take a formal vote at such time as the application comes back before us. But this will give you an idea of what the thinking is.
I would definitely support it. I have to say that I'm impressed with his helping of your post and beam project. Having grown up in a post and beam house in Connecticut that was built in seventeen hundred, I know they can be a little challenging. So I appreciate that. But I see no reason for us to deny this request, especially given the abutter's input.
Dave Thompson?
Thank you, Paul. I was very impressed with the fact that the neighbors could work out their differences without having to come here and have us do it. I'm always interested in woodworking shops. I definitely am interested in post and beam, as I have one. And I think it's a very, very nice project.
Randy?
Thank you. So I also have a post and beam, so here we go. And I thought I saw a little critter in the home of that tree. And knowing your sense of humor, Mr. Counsel, I thought you were going to bring it up, that he was in a butter or something. Did you notice the critter in the tree?
I don't have any personal familiarity, but I understand the point about the photograph.
Yeah, so if it's okay with him, it's okay with me.
And I agree with all the previous comments. I certainly can support this. And it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood in any way, shape or form. And I'm, and I'm pleased that they worked it out with the neighbors.
Good. And Buck?
Once again, so in my lifetime, I've lived in two homes primarily. One is the original family home on Harding's Lane. I spent many years at, and a house in Western Mass. Both of them have exact situations as we have today. Encroachment within a foot of the property line. And privacy has been lost. I can go into a lot of details. I don't, I should have found this out before I got here, but I'll ask the chair. Can an easement have a time limit on it?
Well, I guess that's in the nature of the easement, but I would assume that it's possible if it's negotiated on that basis. But I'll leave that up to counselors.
If I could respond, no, we've got to be careful, because there are four attorneys in the room. An easement is usually perpetual, but it can be limited in time.
Fine, I'll cut to the chase. If this was an easement for twenty years, or maybe thirty, I could support it. But I'm not going to go into the details of the problems. But I just will underscore that when we had an encroachment, the neighbors got along famously. But then one of the neighbors sold, and somebody else moved in. And it's been a royal blah, blah, blah. So things like this, privacy, when you do this, if it goes on forever, it could be a hundred, two hundred, three hundred years. Somebody's losing privacy. But as I said, if there was a condition on the length of the easement, I could support it.
Okay. And I guess from my viewpoint, I see these setbacks as being primarily designed to protect neighbors. And when neighbors are able to arrive at agreements that to them seem satisfactory to resolve it for themselves and for the future, that makes sense to do. Additionally, the encroachment is in an area of the property which is not really impactful on the residents that's nearby. So for those reasons, I think I would tend to support as well. But in terms of overall feedback, I think that gives you some feedback. And we'll go from there when it's represented in October.
Could I request, Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the applicant, that the matter be continued for your further consideration on October twentieth, which I presume will be a three-minute hearing?
I move to grant the request.
All right. Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion to continue? Okay. Buck seconded. All right, we'll take a vote on that. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Bill?
Bill votes yes.
Dave Thompson?
Dave Thompson, yes.
Dave Veach votes yes.
Dave Veach and I vote yes.
Thank you very much for your time.
It's going to be a special meeting. Okay, Sarah, do you want to move to our next hearing, which I believe is application twenty-two dash oh five nine?
Application number twenty-two dash zero five nine, Kevin V. Steinhauer and Susan R. Steinhauer, care of William F. Riley Esquire, P.O. Box seven oh seven, Chatham, Mass. zero two six three three. Owner of property located at thirty-seven Seaview Street. Also shown on the town of Chatham's assessor's map, fifteen E., Block six, Lot sixteen. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend or change a nonconforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot via the construction of an addition. The existing dwelling is The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and it is located eighteen point six feet from the road. The proposed addition will be non-conforming, and then it will be located twenty-four point two feet from the road where a twenty-five-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is one thousand three hundred four square feet, nine point three percent, and the proposed building coverage is one thousand four hundred ninety-five square feet, ten point six percent, where fifteen percent is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, in that it contains fourteen thousand twenty-four square feet, where twenty thousand square feet is required in the R forty zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section six, and Section five B of the protective bylaw. This was continued from July eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Good afternoon, Bill Riley, on behalf of the Steinhowers. I have to apologize, I've learned a lesson recently, that if we have to go to the Historic Commission, we shouldn't come here until we have a final decision from the Historic Commission. So, we need a continuance, because we don't have a decision from the Historic Commission yet. I put a date, I think, in my, in my letter to Sarah.
November seventeenth, you had requested.
If that's convenient for the board, I'd appreciate a continuance to that date for the Steinhowers.
All right, does the board have any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the application for continuance to November seventeenth?
I so move.
And I second.
All right, do a roll call vote. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Bill?
Bill votes yes.
Dave Thompson, yes.
Dave Veach votes yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Sarah, let's move on to twenty-two dash oh seven five.
Application, application number twenty-two dash zero seven five, the Mary Ann Renaud Trust, two thousand and seven, care of William F. Riley Esquire, P.O. Box seven oh seven, Chatham, Mass. zero two six three three, owner of property located at fifty-three Griss Mill Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors' Map, fifteen C., Block fifteen A., Lot three C. The applicant proposes to install an exterior mechanical system appliance, generator, five feet from the southerly abutter where a twenty-five-foot setback is required. The lot contains forty-one thousand eight hundred seventy-five square feet in an R forty zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section six, and Section five B of the protective bylaw.
This is a situation where the Renauds would like to have a generator located on their property line. The, as shown on the, the plan on the screen, the generator would meet the street setback, but would only be five feet from the sideline. We have a pre-existing nonconformity on that side, because there's a mechanical device, an air conditioning condenser, that does not meet the setback right there, it's twenty-two feet from the sideline. It's pretty straightforward, I'd be happy to go through the criteria, if you would. So, adequacy to the size of the site, in terms of the size of the proposed use, the proposed generator is approximately twenty-four square feet on a lot with a buildable upland of twenty-eight thousand three hundred fifty-three square feet, so we believe that the site is adequate for the proposal. Compatibility to the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties, I don't think that's applicable in this instance. Extended proposed increase in nonconforming nature of the structure or use. So, as I indicated, there's currently a mechanical device, an air conditioning condenser, that does not meet the setback from the southerly sideline. So, we have an existing nonconformity on this side of the property. Under the snow-in case, we have the ability to request a further, we have a right to increase, to request an increase in the nonconforming nature, and so that's what we're doing here, where the generator would be five feet from the southerly sideline, and that would be the increase in the nonconforming nature of the property. Suitability of the site, including, we're not limited to impact on neighboring properties or on the natural environment, including slopes, vegetation, wetlands, groundwater, water bodies, and stormwater runoff. Because of the level nature of the site, and the minor, minor size of the site, we don't believe that, we do believe the site is suitable for the proposed construction. The proposed generator will be screened from plantings, so we believe that, under criteria number five, that there will be no negative impact on the neighborhood's visual character or streetscapes. We're not the only property in the neighborhood that has a generator, so we are compatible, I believe. And then, I think, criteria seven through ten is really not applicable in this instance. That'd be our presentation, happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. I'll ask if there's anyone in our audience who would like to speak in favor of this application, and please indicate now, so that you may speak.
I see no one who wishes to speak in favor.
At this point, I would normally read correspondence, but there is no correspondence in the file with respect to this application, so we can pass that. I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak against this proposal, or has a specific question.
I see no one that wishes to speak in opposition, or has a question.
All right. Why don't we check with board members? We'll start with Megan.
I have no questions.
Okay. Dave Thompson?
Dave Thompson, no questions.
Randy?
No questions?
Dave Veach has no questions.
Buck has no questions.
When I went out there, it wasn't staked, and I, I just assumed it was, I didn't have a site plan either. Did we get a site plan on this, Sarah? I must've missed, didn't have it, so, anyway, regardless.
We apologize for not being staked, you know, it was apparently a failure of communication between my office and the engineer's office.
Okay, that's fine. But, when you, you say it's gonna be landscaped to protect the streetscape, and I didn't see anything from the abutter, who I assume you probably contacted, and they didn't respond. So, is there gonna be any landscaping along the property line as well, or any kind of other buffer?
My understanding is they're gonna plant shrubbery around it.
Okay. Around the whole generator?
Well, that's my understanding, I didn't, obviously, we don't have a plan, but that's my understanding.
Okay, that, I didn't have any other questions.
If you wanna impose a condition, you can impose a condition.
Yeah, well, you might do that. I'm good.
Okay.
And I have, I have no questions. So, do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
I move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Buck seconds.
All right, take a roll call vote. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Bill?
Bill votes yes.
Dave Thompson, yes.
Dave Veach votes yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, why don't we start our deliberations? We'll start with Dave Thompson.
I don't have really much to say on this, it's a generator, a generator makes noise. It's nothing you can't live with, I would support it.
I'd support it.
Yeah, I don't think that this is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, I, I was, it was interesting to see that the neighbors' air conditioning units are right adjacent to where this is gonna be placed, so I can't imagine they have any objections, and it makes a lot of sense, so I will support it.
And I would support it also.
As would I, and if, I think if we could condition it possibly to add, to make sure that they do put some landscaping between the generator and the property line, that would, to me, be a positive.
And Megan?
I would have no issue, and I personally don't see a need for a condition, but probably wouldn't cause, I'm not voting, so it doesn't matter.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve the application? I, I agree that it does not appear to me to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and we've heard no objection from the neighbor.
Yeah, I would move to approve the application as submitted. I, I, just to say, I don't understand Bill's thing, but it seems to me, in this situation, where there's, where there's air conditioning units right there, I, I don't know that conditioning it to plant screening is, is really an effective thing on our part.
Yeah, I think, since they brought it up and proposed it, that they were gonna buffer the streetscape, I would, I would rather they buffer the generator from the property line than the streetscape.
Well, I just mentioned the streetscape, because that's in the criteria, as opposed to the neighbor, that's all.
Randy, did you have another input?
Yeah, I don't know if this fine tunes it at all, Bill, but would you think it's substantially detrimental to the neighborhood if it doesn't have plantings? I would just think that that would be the question.
No, not necessarily, I'm just going off of what was proposed.
No, but I get your point, I totally get your point, 'cause there's somebody near my house that doesn't have shrubs, and I think...
And I think the fact that the abutter didn't respond, or hasn't chimed in on the application, says a lot, too.
And any other conditions, then?
I don't think we need any other conditions, no.
So, the motion is to approve as submitted?
As submitted, yeah.
And Buck seconds.
Okay.
And Buck votes yes.
Buck votes yes, all right, Bill?
Yes.
Dave Thompson, yes.
Dave Veach votes yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to application twenty-two dash zero eight zero.
Application number twenty-two dash zero eight zero, Thomas Smith III and Jennifer Smith Family Trust, care of William F. Riley Esquire, P.O. Box seven oh seven, Chatham, Mass. zero two six three three, owners of property located at forty-two Black Duck Landing, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors' Map, twelve B., Block one D., Lot B five. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a nonconforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot via the construction of an addition and deck. The existing dwelling is nonconforming, and then it is located forty-three point four feet from the coastal conservancy district, and the deck is located eleven point nine feet from the northwestern abutter. The proposed addition will be nonconforming, in that it will be located thirty-six point three feet from the coastal conservancy district where a fifty-foot buffer, setback is required, and the deck will be nonconforming, in that it will be located nine point seven feet from northwestern abutter where a twenty-five-foot setback is required. The proposed building coverage is one thousand two hundred eighty-three square feet, nine point nine percent, where fifteen percent is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming, in that it contains thirteen thousand twenty-five square feet of buildable upland where twenty thousand square feet is required in the R forty zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section six, and Section five B of the protective bylaw.
Good afternoon, Bill Riley, on behalf of the Smith family. The, so, this is a proposal for a small addition on the rear of the house. It's two hundred and sixty-two square feet, the ridge of the addition is substantially below the ridge of the house, so that it would not be visible over it. If you've been to the site, it's a very heavily overgrown lot, and I'm betting they want the addition, so they can sit, they can sit somewhere and not have bugs around them, to tell you the truth. Man, it is wild country down there. The, we have the screen, we have Karen Kempton, who's done the design, and she's gonna give you a brief explanation of how the Smith family came to make this request. Karen? Can you hear us, Karen? You're muted.
You can, okay. You're not, your voice is not coming across to us.
She's muted.
She's muted.
So, Karen, if you look for the little microphone, it should be at the bottom of your screen, unclick the line through it, and it should allow it to unmute, or you can call in.
What was she gonna say?
It was funny, we talked about this, I said, "Do you wanna just send me your presentation, and I'll read it?" So, while Karen's trying to unmute herself, would you put that last image back up? Okay, so, this is the rear of the house, you can see the addition, it's quite small, three, two hundred and sixty-two square feet, and the ridge does not even reach the mid-level of the second-floor windows. I drove out there and looked around, I don't think the houses in the neighborhood can see the addition. I suppose it's possible that, as you're looking at the house, the house on the right, which has two stories, might be able to look down on it, but I'm not certain of that, it's just a very, very heavily overgrown, and so I think it's a very, very modest structure. I'm happy to go through the criteria. Karen, oh, she's calling in, all right.
Wait a minute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Sorry about that, my unmute button doesn't wanna unmute. So, good afternoon, Karen Kempton, architect for Tom and Jen Smith. If we can go to the proposed first-floor plan? The existing halfcape was built in nineteen eighty-three, and had a modest size of eighteen hundred and sixty-six square feet of living space between the first and second floor. The idea was to add additional living space and a laundry area without impacting the existing interior layout to keep costs down. The existing thirteen-by-twenty narrow living room is located at the front of the house, and does not afford views of the expansive backyard. So, we're proposing a modest sunroom addition off the dining room, by removing the existing slider to the existing deck. So, the addition is fourteen feet wide, so as not to impact the existing kitchen window, and we added about four and a half feet bump out off the existing bathroom for a stack washer dryer unit, to get it out of the basement. The height of the sunroom is thirteen feet above the top of foundation, which is seven feet below the existing ridge, so not visible from the front street. The existing deck, which wraps around the house, is twelve feet deep, and twenty feet long. So, the proposed deck is thirteen by sixteen, which is a much more efficient and usable size. If we can go to the basement plan? The existing unfinished basement is at walkout level, so as part of this project, we're proposing to finish a portion of the existing basement and the area under the new addition. This will give the Smiths an additional eight hundred square feet of living space, without adding to the visible mass or scale of the house from the street. We think this is a modest addition to the rear of the house, and is not detrimental to the neighborhood.
So adequacy of the size of the site in terms of the size of the proposed use. The applicant believes that the size of the site is adequate for the proposed project because the additions to the rear of the building is only increasing coverage by approximately 260 square feet. I think my secretary got this one wrong, but where a total of 2,800 square feet would be allowed, and so there's going to be about 2,000 square feet, a little more of that, of building coverage. It was supposed to be in my notes, but it is on the house plan, the site plan. Extend a proposed increase for the nonconforming nature of the structure so the existing building is 22.7 feet from the northerly property line with 25 feet is required. The existing deck and stairs on that side of the house are 18 feet from the sideline. The proposed deck will be 14.8 feet, where 25 feet is required, and the proposed addition will be 23.2 feet. So on the... Thank you. So on the site plan, you see, we do have a setback from the top of the coastal bank, which meets the criteria, but there's a section where there is no coastal bank because the grading is less than 10 to 1. So we're 43 feet from the floodplain, but it's not within 50 feet of a coastal bank. The coastal bank starts up again over on the right-hand side, and we're 54 feet from So the suitability of the site, including that limited impact on neighboring properties. Now, I learned two days ago that the property had not been to the Conservation Commission, and it's obligated to go to the Conservation Commission. Working with an engineer that has done a whole lot of work in Chatham, John O'Reilly, he's a very good engineer, typically the engineer that we're working with, when he realizes there's Conservation Commission jurisdiction, automatically files, and we would have at least an indication today as to how they would rule. But we haven't filed with them yet, I learned yesterday. So I apologize for that, and once I'm done with the presentation, you may want to consider just continuing it. It would be a fairly lengthy continuance, because as I say, they haven't filed yet. They're in the process of preparing the filing, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. But because of the slope of the backyard, it's clear that any work that would be allowed by the Conservation Commission is going to require significant and substantial silt fences to be certain that there's no siltation, as to say runoff, from the property that would impact the abutting wetland, vegetated wetland. Impact of scale, size, and mass on a neighborhood visual character, including views, vistas, and streetscapes. Because it's not visible from the street, I don't think it's going to have any impact on the neighborhood visual character. Compatibility of the proposed use, it's a single-family residence in a single-family neighborhood. I think that the project as a whole is not substantially more detrimental than the existing structure, but as I say, we have not yet been to the Conservation Commission, so I defer to the board as to how you want to handle that.
All right, well, why don't I ask, as a preliminary matter, does anybody on the board feel that we should in fact wait for action by the Conservation Commission before we begin our deliberations on this matter? Let me start with Randy.
I wouldn't object to doing what we did with the prior application, you know, just sort of making opinions, noting that we're not going to vote today, but I thought it was odd that you didn't bring that up at the beginning. Usually you do.
Yeah, I apologize.
Dave Veach?
It seems to me that we could act on this in this case, you know, should the Conservation Commission desire changes to the structure somehow, then that'd have to come back to us, but I think, to me, it looks relatively straightforward. I think this is an instance where I don't think we would necessarily be out of line to act before the cons go.
Okay. Buck?
I was kind of surprised that we were even hearing it. I think, I'm pretty sure my memory's still good on this, I saw a fax requesting a continuance in our correspondence package. Didn't I get that?
That was for 37 Seaview.
Pardon?
That was for 37 Seaview Street.
Sorry. I guess I have no concerns about hearing it, then.
Okay. Bill?
Yeah, I think given what they put on the plan, they're going to... I don't know what else conservation could possibly come up with in this situation, you know, given the landscape out there. If they're going to protect that area with silt fence significantly, I just don't see what else conservation could possibly come up with, so I would be in favor of hearing it and voting on it.
Megan?
I would be in favor of voting on it today. I don't see any reason why we need to hold back.
Okay, and Dave Thompson?
I have no objections to going right forward here, letting Mr. Riley present his case and us discussing it and voting on it.
All right, I agree. I think we should go ahead and adhere it, and we'll let them come back if in fact conservation comes up with something that affects the plans that we've approved. So we've had our presentation. Let me ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this application, to please indicate so on your computer device or in our hearing.
I see no one that wishes to speak in favor.
All right, I'll read the correspondence. We have a memo from Judith Giorgio, health agent, dated September 2022. I have reviewed the plan to add an addition and deck at this property. The proposed plan will not add sewage flow to the property, nor will it encroach on the existing septic system. I have no concerns. And we have a memorandum from Nicole Smith, the conservation agent, saying the applicant will need to file for a permit with Cons from Conservation. No filing has been received at this point. That's what you were referring to, I believe.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. And then we have a letter dated August 16th to the board from Richard and Caroline Grant, 56 Black Duck Landing. I have been the owner of 56 Black Duck Landing since June 2016, and I'm writing to the board to offer my support for Tom and Jennifer Smith's special permit request to construct an addition to their home at 42 Black Duck Landing. As residents adjacent to Tom and Jennifer's home, I have reviewed the plans and feel that the proposed construction will be a welcome addition to the neighborhood. Thank you for consideration of my letter. And then we have a letter from Joanne and Vincent Silvestri, 16 Black Duck Landing. My wife, Joanne Longo-Silvestri, and I have been the owners of 16 Black Duck Landing since 2004, and I'm writing today to the board to offer our unqualified support for Tom and Jennifer Smith's special permit request to construct an addition to their home at 46 Black Duck Landing. Recently, and in accordance with Chatham zoning board requirements, Tom and Jennifer reviewed the building plans for their proposed new addition in detail with us. Based on this review and after careful consideration, we wholeheartedly believe the plans are well-conceived and designed, successfully complementing and enhancing their existing home while keeping within the character of the other houses in our Black Duck Landing neighborhood. We hope the board will act favorably on their repeal and unanimously approve the building and site plans submitted with their request to be heard on September 22nd. On behalf of my wife, allow me to thank you and advise for your consideration of our letter of support, and that's signed by Vincent Silvestri. I believe that is our correspondence. I will ask if there's anyone in the audience or on Microsoft who would like to object to the application or has a specific question.
I see no one that wishes to speak in opposition or has a question.
Okay, why don't we ask for questions from the board? Why don't we start with Dave Veach?
I have no questions, Paul.
Buck?
I have no questions.
Bill?
No questions.
Megan?
No questions.
Dave Thompson?
Dave Thompson doesn't have any questions either.
No questions.
Randy? All right, and I have no questions, all right. Do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
I move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
All right.
Buck seconds.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Beck?
Buck votes yes.
And Bill?
Bill votes yes.
Dave Thompson?
Dave Thompson, yes.
Dave Veach votes yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, let's start with our deliberations. Why don't we start with Buck?
So I was confused. I didn't see a request for a continuance, but I did see the note from Nikki that they hadn't filed yet, so I put it in my mind that we weren't going to hear it today, so that's what led to my confusion. I won't make a big deal about it, and I'll support it.
Okay. Yeah, you know, after visiting the site, actually talked to the owners and looking at the plan, I certainly don't think this is more substantially detrimental, and I'll support the application as well.
Megan?
I would agree with the previous speakers.
All right, Dave Thompson?
Well, I agree with the previous speakers, and looking at the floor plan, they definitely could use some additional living space in the kitchen dining area. It's going to be a beautiful spot down there in the cedar swamp.
Very good.
And I agree with my colleagues, and I think the architect is, as we say in Boston, is really smart.
It's certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood at all. It meets all of our applicable criteria, and I will support it.
And I agree. It's certainly hidden from view in the back of the house, and if there are problems with conservation, then perhaps they'll be back here, but hopefully not. Do I hear a motion to approve the application with any conditions?
Yeah, I don't think this is a neighborhood where we need to be concerned about conditions necessarily, so I would move that we approve the application as submitted.
All right.
And Buck seconds.
Buck seconds, all right. We'll take a roll call.
And Buck votes yes.
Bill?
Bill votes yes.
Dave Thompson?
Dave Thompson votes yes.
Dave Veach votes yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to our next hearing, we go to 22-081.
Application number 22-081, Scattery LLC, care of William F. Riley Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Agreed vendee of the property located at 229 Scattery Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham successors map, 17J Block 2 Lot 11. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a nonconforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is nonconforming, and that it is located eight feet from the coastal conservancy district, floodplain elevation 14. The proposed dwelling will be nonconforming, and that it will be located 13 feet from the coastal conservancy district where a 50-foot setback is required. Also proposed is the construction of a new driveway as allowed by special permit under 4A 3D of the bylaw. The existing building coverage is 2,186 square feet, 60.8 percent, and the proposed building coverage is 2,775 square feet, 77.2 percent, where 15 percent, but not more than 2,800 square feet, is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming, and that it contains 3,596 square feet of buildable upland where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Sections 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D and 2B of the protective bylaw.
All right, Mr. Riley?
Mr. Thompson has his hand up.
I'm sorry, sir, you didn't leave a plan for me.
I apologize. I'm happy to report that this project has been to the Conservation Commission. With me today is Mike Tartamella of Patrick Ahorn Associates and Dave Clark, who's our engineer on this project. So the Ferris family, who are the proponents here, have been, you know, are originally from Massachusetts, and they live in Florida, and they have been coming to Chatham for many years, renting places, and as their children have turned into teenagers, they really want to have a place where they can come and spend the entire summer. So they found the Mackayeva property down at the end of Scattery, and stepped forward and made the purchase. So the goal was to create a new home that would have room for them and their family, a very active family, I'm told, and so they engaged the services of Ahorn Associates to do their design. We did have some struggles not exceeding the total lot coverage, and so we went through several iterations so that they got most of the room they wanted without exceeding the lot coverage allowed, which is 2,850, 2,850 square feet, given the amount of area on there.
2,800 total.
Oh, 2,800 total? Not 2,850, all right. In any event, so it took quite a bit of work to get the Ferris family's wishes down to fit that envelope, and I'm going to ask Mike Tartamella of Ahorn Associates to explain how the design came about and how they managed to fit everything in. Mike?
So Mike Tartamella, Patrick Ahorn, architect. So as Mr. Riley said, we had a pretty challenging site here, and I think after establishing the build footprint, we developed what would be an H-shaped design with a garage wing protruding to the south. Go forward a little bit, if you mind. The house we've developed is a traditional sort of gambrel-style H-frame with symmetrical wings on either side of it. We've designed the garage to look as though it was detached at one point and then attached over time, and attaching the garage to the house is done by a series of permeable deck surfaces, so we've intentionally made those so that water could penetrate through them all the way through to the ground plane, and I think we provided in our packet a little detail of those decks for you as well. The exterior of the house would be all shingled in natural white cedar shingle to weather, red cedar shingle on the roof, so I think at the end of the day, the house looks as though it's very in keeping with the traditional... the traditional New England shingle style binocular. The house is also 20, about 24 feet tall from grade to ridge, although in this case with the zoning bylaw, we're roughly at about 38.7 feet. But the house appears, if you look at it from the grade plane here on the left, all the way to the ridge. The house is only, what we would say architecturally is 24 feet tall. The, the garage is slightly taller just by nature of the land dropping down and also the geometry of the box. But all in all, I think the house fits into the area well. It's certainly lower than some of the abutting properties and I think responds to the site constraints that we had to work with. Happy to take any questions on the architecture.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll go, I'll run through the criteria. Adequacy of the size of the site in terms of the size of the proposed use. The lot actually contains 84,400 square feet. The, but because of the FEMA flood plain, we have only 3,596 square feet of buildable upland. The existing dwelling on the lot has a lot coverage of 2,186 square feet, where the proposed building coverage is 2,775 square feet, a very small percentage of the total lot area, but 77.2% of the buildable upland. The compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. This is a, an old neighborhood, Scattery is, and so there are some larger newer homes and smaller, older homes. And we have a list of the net areas as the third page in the handout. I think that, given the landscape plan and the, the distance the house sets back from the road, we think that even though it's a larger home, we, we don't think that it's incompatible with the neighboring properties. Except the proposed increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure. So the principal increase in non-conforming nature is the increase in the building coverage of approximately 600 square feet. There's a substantial increase in the living area on a non-conforming lot, which is considered an intensification of a non-conformity. The gross area of the first floor is just over 2,500 square feet and the gross floor area, the gross foot area according to my handout, is 2,015 square feet for a total gross area of the house of 4,538 square feet. So it is a big house. The substantial increase in the living area is a result of separating the garage because the existing house has a two-car garage attached and utilizing a larger percentage of the second floor for active living space. The suitability of the site, including but not limited to the impact on neighboring properties or on natural environment, including slopes, vegetation, wetlands, groundwater, water bodies and stormwater runoff. Because of the nature of the, of the property, if we could put the site plan up, well, that's a, yeah, just a site plan, great. Okay, so the, the elevation of the beach in the front of the property is somewhat above the ground area where the house is located. So the house is in a little bit of a well, so we don't think runoff is going to be an issue on the neighboring properties. We have been to the Conservation Commission. They haven't finished their, their work. They wanted to see a revised landscape plan, which is the plan I passed out today. But we believe that the, the project is going to provide protection for the adjacent wetland and so is therefore the, the construction aspect is, site suitable for the proposed construction. Impact of scale, siding and mass on the neighborhood visual character, including views, vistas and streetscapes. So because the house is, is lower than the house to the west, which is a very substantial home, the, one, there's no concern about their views. The property to the south, which is the Foley property, they did have a concern regarding our planting plan. And they've revised the planting plan to ensure that their views will remain. So I think that in terms of a neighborhood visual character, we, we believe, you know, that it's not substantially more detrimental than the existing structure. We think, you know, bringing things into the 21st century is a probably a good idea. It's built on a FEMA foundation, so it complies with all of the flood regulations. So we believe that while it is a significantly different design and significantly larger, we believe that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood in terms of views, vistas and streetscapes. Compatibility to proposed use with neighboring properties. It's a single-family home in a single-family neighborhood, so it is compatible. There are no changes in the number of bedrooms, so the existing septic system, I believe, will be, continue to be used. We don't believe there'd be any impact on traffic flow and safety and noise or litter. The, I did fail to review the lateral expansion in the flood plain, but we believe because the properties, the structure being built with a FEMA foundation, that the lateral expansion is not having any negative impacts on the flood plain itself. That'd be our presentation.
All right, thank you. I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this application or on Microsoft team, and please indicate if you would like to speak.
There is no one that wishes to speak in favor.
All right, I'll read the correspondence. First from Crystal Keon, the Conservation Commission, this project is scheduled for, or an OOC on October 5, 2022. That would be an order of conditions?
Yes.
Yes.
That's their work, work session, first meeting in October.
All right. And then we have a memo dated September 20th from Judith Giorgio, health agent. The plan to demolish and rebuild this existing five-bedroom dwelling is acceptable to me at this time. The plan appears to use the existing septic system, which was constructed in 1996 for the dwelling and is adequate for five bedrooms. The dwelling proposed with a crawl space foundation will meet the offset requirements to the existing septic system. And then we have a memorandum from Catherine Helper, the chair of the planning board. The planning board at their August 22, 2022, meeting reviewed the zoning board's request for comment on 229 Scattery Road. First went to Section 4A 3D of the protective zoning bylaw for the construction and maintenance of a driveway or roadway in the Conservancy, Conservancy District where no alternative means of access from an established way is available. After review of this request, the board voted 600 to, to send a positive recommendation with the condition that the driveway shall be constructed of a permeable material and shall be constructed in a manner which permits the unobstructed flow of water. If you have any questions regarding the above, please do not hesitate to contact community development department staff. And then we have a letter from Stephen B. Schroeder, who says, Dear Mr. Nixon, my name is Stephen B. Schroeder and my wife Pamela and I have a home at 36 Whistler Lane, North Chatham. We have owned this property since 1999 and built our home there in 2006, 2007. Our property lies directly west, abutting Mr. Ron Ferris's property at 229 Scattery Road, Town of Chatham Assessor's map, 171 Block 2, Lot 11. We have a copy of the architectural drawings developed by highly respected and acclaimed architect Patrick Ahern, who Ron Ferris has contracted with to build his home. The design and structure of the house is of the highest quality and would certainly enhance the real estate values in the neighboring area. Therefore, we have no objection to the applicant's desire to enlarge, extend, or change the non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot. We support the applicant's desire to build his house utilizing the plans drawn by Patrick Ahern and submitted to the Town of Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals. That's the extent of our correspondence. All right, I will ask if there is anyone in the audience who would like to express an opinion in opposition to this application or has a specific question.
Is he no one that wishes to speak in opposition or has a question?
All right, let's move on to board deliberations. Why don't we start with Bill?
Questions?
Yes, questions, I'm sorry.
It, this is kind of an engineering related question, but is there any cut or?
We have Dave here. Dave? He's our engineer.
My, my question is, to the extent of grading, if any, here, I can't read the topo, existing versus proposed, and I was curious if there was any cut or fill required to meet these grades that you're trying to get to.
There's no cutting and filling required. After the last couple of houses we've done in the, in the flood zone.
So there's none?
None.
Well, not only are we not doing any, we couldn't do any if we wanted to because we have a regulation that says no cutting or filling in a flood plain.
Just making sure. Then.
We have eagle eyes watching us, every, watching every move.
It says, I know you brought up the, the buildable upland and the real, you know, the minimal amount really on the site. Can you tell me about where that line is on here, on the site plan?
Show it up on the site, put the site plan up on the screen.
It's basically west of the house. You see that green line that's just west of the house? So the buildable upland is between that green line and the westerly property line.
Just along the edge there?
Just along the edge. And that's, that's where the leach field is, basically.
You show on this?
Yeah, I think you got it. I think you got it. The green line really points it up. Yeah. There you go. I don't have any other questions, Paul.
All right, Megan?
I have a couple of questions. What is the ridge height of the current house versus what's going up? I think I can see it, although.
So the real, ridge elevation of the current house is 33.3 feet?
And it's going to?
38.7.
And I don't know if this is a question, but I am, is anyone else concerned that you're only leaving 25 square feet for error? Five, five square feet, sorry. Yeah, five square feet. I mean, that seems, okay, I'm going to just give you this as a background, which Bill knows, but you do not, probably, that we have been back and forth for several special permits and several variances due to this issue. And with a house this size, which I'm sorry, but I think it's markedly increasing the mass in the neighborhood, I'm concerned that you're super duper close, because I would not give you a variance for this house.
So we spent an enormous amount of time coordinating with, with Dave.
Who's building it?
Well.
Because that's the real problem.
Well, we're working backwards from our drawing too. I mean, I think what you're seeing from a footprint standpoint here is to the outermost edge of trim, we'll be then working backwards in from there on a foundation. So I'm very keenly aware from a number of applications we've had that, yes, I know the sensitivity to that subject in the room and we're going to make pretty sure that, you know, we're right on our number here, if anything.
Well, yeah, I'd make very sure it's going to come down probably at your expense.
We are, we are. Yeah, we're, we're going to work inside of that.
Because if this is granted, you're granted the absolute, I mean, I'll just leave it there.
Well, we wouldn't, we, Megan, we wouldn't qualify for a variance.
I know.
So, I mean, there's no.
That's why I'm.
There's no hardship, so we wouldn't qualify.
That's why I'm a little concerned that you're that close.
Believe me, we'd be, we'd be chainsawing sections of the house off if we don't, if we don't meet it. But we're aware of it and we're, we're planning to be, to meet the requirements.
And then.
Without a chainsaw.
My only other question, and I think I see this clearly on the plan, but there is no entrance to, well, I have two questions. One, there is no entrance to the bathroom from that quote unquote fitness area, correct?
Uh, no, no, there isn't.
And it will have a six-foot, at least a six-foot opening?
That's what, yes, that's what we're showing on the plan, yes.
That seems questionable. And then my only other thing of note is that I would not approve it with a coupula because I feel like I need to, I owe Mr. Nixon that.
All right, Dave Thompson?
Uh, Dave Thompson does not have any questions for Mr. Riley.
Randy?
I have no questions.
Dave Veach?
I'm just curious, the, whether you have the, because I didn't see it in Bill's presentation, that, whether you have information on the existing gross floor area of the existing building?
So what we do have is, i- it's roughly 3,300 square feet, excluding the garage, but including the basement that is there.
About 3,300.
Yeah.
And, and you're going to 44, was that, 4,400?
45.
4,300.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, okay, I don't have any other questions.
All right, Buck?
It's certainly a beautiful house, no doubt about it. Maybe, maybe in that location, it isn't, it looks like it's going to be the second largest house in the neighborhood based on Bill's sheet. Or there's one house that's big and all the rest are smaller, so this is, it's big. That's all, it's big.
It is big, but we're lucky that the larger house is right next door.
It's big. What bothers me more than anything, and I want to, and to Megan's question about the ridge, it's going up approximately six feet, maybe 5.8, something like that, but it's going up six feet. I don't like, I should, I probably should say it in better words, but I don't like getting the mitigation planting during the hearing, because I'm trying to listen to the presentation and I'm trying to read the print. It's, it's, it's not what I call kosher and I'm not pleased with that. But I'll, I'll continue because I, in my quick review of it, it appears there's a lot of mitigation, maybe Mr. Clark can weigh in on this. There appears to be a lot of mitigation going where there's already a ton of large bushes. And I, I didn't go out and write all the Latin names down, so I'm sorry as a layman. But it sure looks like it's a lot of vegetation there, so you're taking out vegetation to put new, new vegetation in.
If I could, before we start, the, the reason why, I wanted to make sure we had the landscape plan, is on some previous meetings, when I didn't have a landscape plan, I received some critical comments, so I wanted to make sure we had the landscape plan for that reason. So, but go ahead, Dave.
Your point was taken by Conservation and Teresa Sprague, Blue Flag Design, had a conversation with them during the meeting about that point. And the idea is not to take out all the, all the, all the vegetation in the mitigation areas that are closest to the water. All the natives will remain and so they'll, they'll use care in removing the invasives and infilling. and infilling. So what you see as a mitigation area on the waterside, it's, it's not being called mitigation, it's being called restoration. So we're taking out the invasives, leaving all the natives and infilling, and basically creating a native habitat.
Good answer, and I appreciate that. What does concern me, and I'm only mentioning this, I know I'm sitting at ZBA and I don't have a conservation hat on, I'll make that perfectly clear, but I still have heard things, and they're asking for my opinion, so I'm gonna speak them. Conservation right now is talking about increasing the protection to 100 feet for the top of Coastal Bank. You don't have to comment on it, it's, they're, they're looking to increase their authority at restricting development 100 feet from the top of the Coastal Bank. If you look at the top of the Coastal Bank, this, this whole house, this whole renovation is below the top of the Coastal Bank. So I'm wondering how they even are considering this as a reasonable project further, and I don't know how many people, and, and this does have, I believe comes under ZBA. Dave, can you take that little laser beam and show us a VE zone and how close it comes to that deck? And then explain what a VE zone is for the people that maybe don't know it? And it's five feet above the flood plain?
So the blue line is the V-zone, and it comes right to the deck.
And, and what is a VE zone?
It's areas of higher wave heights.
It's a velocity zone.
So you expect, waves greater than three feet in height. In this particular case, it's VE-19, so it is basically 19 feet above sea level.
That means it's a five-foot wave?
It, it doesn't, you can expect wave heights in the, in the zone of up to 19 feet. What that also includes is the wave breaking and the residual energy from the wave breaking, and you can have splashing up to elevation 19.
The reason I bring that up is the more famous was right around the corner at Eastward Ho, where the run-up on the VZ, a VE zone was like 30, 25 or 30 feet, when the flood plain was only 15 or something, and it was a little confusing to have such a close VE. It transitions from a VE to an AE, and you have fair amount of surf, some, some amount coming onto that deck, and it'll be submerged five feet, I think.
It won't be.
It won't be?
It won't be.
Oh, it stops at the deck?
It stops at the deck. And, well, it's a mathematical model.
Okay.
So, you're right, there's a five-foot difference at a vertical plane, and so, like I said, you're not gonna, the, the whole VE zone, you can expect, like I said, wave heights to 19 feet. Mathematical model for this section suggests, just by the, the transition there, that waves are gonna break on the coastal bank. You're gonna have a run-up or splashing up to elevation 19. And then from there on, you'll have wave heights of, of 14 feet.
So my, my concern is, if it's only a two-hour storm, we're all set, but if it lays in for a while, all that waterfront planting, mitigation, isn't that, I mean, isn't that gonna wash away?
Survives a lot of storms. It survived the back-to-back storms in 2017. It survived the breach in 2007. FEMA's model is, is based upon the barrier beach being knocked down to sea level.
Gotcha.
And, and so there's, there's a conservative approach to that, and that's why you see large V-zones along the east side and then the northeast side of Chatham.
So FEMA's current regulation then would have a buffer built in by virtue of the fact that that's still there?
Right.
Yes.
Until it's not, I get it, but, I mean, it's still there today.
Yeah, all their mathematical models are based upon the primary dune disappearing during the storm. Thank you.
If I could just, if I could just point out, the existing house is in very close proximity, and is not constructed in accordance with FEMA requirements, so replacing the existing structure with a FEMA, a building built according to FEMA requirements is actually gonna reduce the possibility of damage to the structure that could theoretically cause damage to other properties in the neighborhood, flotsam and jetsam.
So are you saying that that, the current house has survived the 100-year storm?
No. What I said was, the new house is gonna be built in accordance with FEMA requirements, and the, I believe the FEMA requirements are designed for survivability in storms. And so this house is 50 or 60 years old, and, you know, it's a rigid structure, there's no, there's no space below the living area for storm orders to pass, and so we believe that this design, as proposed, is more survivable in a big, in a major storm than the existing structure.
So a lot of my concern about the conservation, I was just stating it to make sure we're all understood, but my original statement is, beautiful house, but it's kinda big.
That's true.
Bill? What's the elevation of the flood plain?
Of the first floor? Or of the elevation of the flood plain?
It's a foot, well, that depends.
It's a VE...
The AE zone is elevation 14.
14.
And the VE zone, as Dave pointed out, is elevation 19, but that's the, you know, the run-up.
Right, and I see your first floor elevation of the garage somewhere I saw. The slab elevation is 11.2.
Yeah.
That's correct, and we do that, just so you know, because the garage's not a living area, so the house, the first floor has to be above the flood plain by one foot, right there?
Yeah.
And so, so that's why, that's what drives the height of the house. The first floor has to be one foot, at least one foot above the flood plain.
The garage will have flood vents in it, effectively, in the sidewalls of the garage to allow floodwater to pass through. The existing house does not have any flood vents currently, also has a basement, which you're not, you're not permitted to have in this area. The house will have flood vents below the lowest structural member, and I think the increase in height with respect to the comment about it's going up six feet, it's going up 5.4 feet, and a foot of that has to do with raising the first floor elevation of the living space to proper elevations for the FEMA zone.
And that, and this is your words, right, says, the lot, particularly the portion where the house is being located, is in a bit of a bowl, and I assume the fact that, you know, you, you don't wanna grade in a flood plain...
You can't, you can't grade in a flood plain.
Right. You, you have to work with that to try to raise that up to a level that you see as a reasonable level of a first floor for the house.
It's required by the building code.
Right.
First floor elevation is required by the building code.
Right, okay.
All right. Let me just ask a question. On your net area sheet that you have at the back of your presentation, I don't see the property that we're talking about here on there. Am I, am I reading this wrong?
No, I was in a rush today, so I handed this off to my, my staff, and I, I said, "Okay, get, take all the addresses on Scattery up to Old Wharf Road." And I neglected to instruct her to include this property, so I apologize, that's my fault.
So, in response to the questions I think I heard, though, if you were doing existing and proposed, you were using 3,300 square feet without the garage and 4,500 with a proposed?
Yes.
And is that the equivalent of net area?
I believe so. I mean, net area, I've inquired of the assessor's office, which is where we get the numbers from, and they said, "Net area is conditioned area," so if it's heated or cooled, it's supposed to be included. We really don't know how accurate the assessor's numbers are, we just put them down for, because they are a reference, so you can look at a house and say, "Okay, that's got a net area of this much."
Well, it says it has a net area of 2455, not 30-something.
We're talking about gross with the 33. Yeah, there's a very different way to calculate.
The 3,300, I had asked about gross floor area, not net area, and that was the response with respect to gross floor area.
Right, so those responses were gross floor area and net area, do we have net area for this existing?
I think if you take it from the assessor, it's about 2455.
2455?
Right.
And net area of the new structure would be?
About 45.
Forty-five.
That's gross. That's gross. No, net, net's gonna be less than that. I mean, from previous experience in a, in a house that's one and a half stories, you're probably 30%, 20%, 30% less than gross oftentimes.
And your 4,500 includes the garage?
No.
No.
No, so it doesn't include conditioned space, so that wouldn't be part of the net area?
We can't condition the garage in this case.
Right.
Because of its location in the flood plain.
All right, well, I'm just trying to get a feel for, because some of the questions here and the look of it, it looks large, there's no question about that, I'm just trying to get a feel for how it fits into...
If I could address that. I mean, architecturally, you've got a one-and-a-half-story cape that's there right now. You know, what's going back, albeit in a gambrel style, is a one-and-a-half-story house, essentially. It's not a two-story plate with then a roof on top of it from there. It's still below the height restriction, so from a mass and scale standpoint, I realize it's dissimilar in terms of style, but I think in overall feel and char, and character, it's, it's not dissimilar to the house that's there. The house to the west, as we know, is a full two-story plate house with a, with a roof on top of it. So I think, and I do think that there's other houses in the area, just knowing, having worked on Scattery myself, there are a lot of other houses that are also that one-and-a-half story vernacular, so I think it's consistent in that respect, that it's a one-and-a-half-story house, really, not a full two-story plate.
I see. Okay. Are there any other questions? All right, do I hear a motion to close the hearing and move into deliberations?
Aye, so move.
I second.
Do a roll call vote. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Bill?
Bill votes yes.
Dave Thompson, yes.
And Dave Veach?
Dave Veach votes yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Why don't we go ahead with deliberations, and we could start with, I guess, Megan, you're next on the line?
Well, you heard my, my biggest concern, but beyond that, it seems awfully weighty for this neighborhood, and I know there's another house, but there's a lot of smaller houses as well, and, look, it's beautiful, all Ahern houses are beautiful, I'm not gonna lie, like, but it's, it's hefty for this piece of property, so I'm torn.
Okay, thank you. Dave Thompson?
It is a big house, it's a beautiful home. I think it's, it fits in the area. I realize there are homes that are smaller, a lot of them were built back in the 50s, 60s, 70s. For instance, the one to the south of this one, was it 1954, 55, right along in there? It was about the same time that the MacIver House, which is being torn down, was built. It's just the way things are going in Chatham. Houses are getting bigger. I think it's perfect for the neighborhood. It is down in a little bit of a valley. I think it's, I think it's suitable for the area, and I am a voting member, and I will vote yes.
Ready?
Thank you. So if I were voting, I would vote yes, and the reason is, I, I heard the planning board the other day talking about, well, one person spoke about large houses on posted-size lots, and I don't think this is that, because perception's reality, and this is a huge lot.
Right.
And given that our, our role is to say, is this gonna be detrimental to the neighborhood, that's about, in my view, it's a lot about perception, and I think it'll look nice, and not only will it look nice, but it'll look better, and it'll look nice from the ocean as well, so because the lot is so big, I think I would vote yes.
I am, I'm in complete agreement with both Dave and Randy. I think it's, it's a nicely-designed home, there's certainly need to make changes to what's existing under any circumstances, at least for no other reason than flood plain I, the reason I was asking, I hadn't seen any information on the net area, but it looks like, you know, net area-wise, it doesn't look significantly, like a significant increase necessarily in that. I tend to think about, we, we ask for gross floor area, and I tend to think of that as being perhaps more representative of volume, you know, the volume of the buildings, and I often want, you know, I have my, I make a visual interpretation of that, but sometimes it's good to have the numbers to, to, to work with, too. In this case, sure, I think the house is, is going to have, certainly appear somewhat larger than what's there, but I, I think the site can handle it without any real problems. I think it can fit, I think it's a handsome house, I think it'll be an improvement to the neighborhood, as one of the neighbors has commented, and I don't think, I just don't think this is a place to draw a line and say, "No." This is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Yeah, there are smaller houses in the neighborhood, the, the house just to immediately behind it, the Foley House is nowhere near that large, but it's, their view is not going to be negatively impacted by any of the structures here, really, so I, I'm, I support it.
Buck?
I have no problem with the coverage, maximum's 2,800, and they're under it, and certainly the lot size is no problem, but when I look at the Point House, I think the Point House is 224 across the street, the last one on the right, and that one's 2,000, and then the one at the corner, just before you make the hard left turn, I guess, is based on, is 189, and that's 2,200. I, I think that it's, it's the second floor that adds the mass, and if, if it was possible, I'd love them to see, see them come back with something a little bit less mass.
All right, Bill?
Well, this, this stuff really tears me both ways. It's a beautiful house, and it is a big lot, of which buildable upland consists of 5% of the lot, which is a major factor to me. You know, I can sympathize with the owners, but, you know, let the buyer beware, they knew what they were up against when they bought the... They knew what they were up against when they bought the property, perhaps. And, you know, given its location and the impact on the floodplain and the environment and the suitability of this site, I am not inclined to support the application.
All right. Thank you. Megan?
I think, I think after hearing Dave Veach's comments, because I think that what I have done is probably, if I think about it mathematically, now that I'm thinking about it, that's where the size increase is sort of hitting me. But maybe it's not as bad mathematically as it is in my head, because it looks, because this plan just looks so vastly larger to me. But I think, again, it's the height. If you can stay within your 2,800, I'm not voting, but I guess I would probably vote yes.
Okay. Thank you. I think from my viewpoint, this reminds me a little bit of Shell Drive and the size of the lot that was involved there and the house that was being built. For other reasons, I voted against that particular one. In this case, I tend to agree with Randy that it's a major lot, a large lot, and one that can probably handle the house that's proposed for it. So in applying a standard as to whether it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, I realize it's larger than the other houses. Some of those houses, I'm sure we're going to be seeing people coming in and wanting to make them bigger. The Point House is very nice, but I don't think it's even a year-round. And, you know, you can see somebody renovating that and also doing the same kind of thing. So I guess in a standard of whether it's substantially more detrimental, I would say it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. But.
So we just have a question on the, I wasn't good at math. I always said if I could do math, I'd be a doctor. But I'm uncertain as to the current vote, so if we could take a straw vote, I'd appreciate it.
Well, I think, I don't know whether anyone wants to express their views more strongly. We have one that's at least a no, and that's Bill. Buck was, I think, hesitant one way or another. I don't know whether he feels more strongly one now.
I'd like him to come back with a proposal of something in less mass.
That's pretty strong, I think.
All right. Well, that gives you a straw poll. Would you like to request a continuance?
Yes, we would. How much time do you need?
Could I address something with square footage with respect to the conversation about square footage and people determining mass and scale from that? From experience, it's incredibly difficult to assimilate square footage of an abutting structure if that data isn't there. It's nowhere in the town unless you go through previous applications and pull it. If you simply look at the assessor's card, that information doesn't fully capture gross square footage. We've run into this on other applications and in other analysis that we've recently done. So, you know, where we're starting to compare other houses in the area that are on the smaller side, I don't think the gross square footage of those numbers that we're pulling from these places is incredibly accurate at all from a comparison standpoint. So when we talk about, is it more substantially detrimental? I think you have to ask yourself, when you look at the mass and scale of the house as it's drawn in the elevations, that it's a one-and-a-half-story house replacing a one-and-a-half-story house that's there, that the nature of the house is broken down into multiple pieces with the first, with the decks connecting it, does that really project itself as a too massive of a structure for the area, being a one-and-a-half-story traditional Gambrel cape?
Well, I think we've heard your argument. And as I see it, there are at least two board members who have expressed their feelings with respect to this. If you would like to request a continuance, you can certainly do so, or we'll go forward with a vote.
Yeah, we'd like to request a continuance.
All right.
When would you like to go to, Bill? How much time do you need right now?
We're going to need to talk to our client. I mean, I'm not 100% positive right now, so I think we're going to need at least 30 days.
How's November 17th sound? How's November 17th sound?
That's good. We request a continuous to November 17.
All right.
I move to grant the request for a continuous to November 17.
Is there a second?
Second. And a roll call?
Roll call vote.
Buck votes yes.
Buck votes yes? Bill?
Yes.
Who votes yes? Dave Thompson?
Dave Thompson, yes.
Dave Veach votes yes.
Veach votes yes, and I vote yes. So it's continued to November 17, 2022. We, I do want to announce that we have a meeting scheduled for October 13, which is going to be starting at 2:00 p.m., because we have a large agenda for that. So, 2:00. 2:00. It's not, it's not AM, it's PM.
What date was that?
October 13.
October 13.
That's correct. And we will be there, we will be there for a special meeting on the 20th as well, which may not be on your calendar at this point. We will be here next week as well. That's correct. It's been a busy, busy couple of weeks, couple of months. I'm sorry?
Are we still in the meeting? I can, am I the only one here that has like a day job besides the people who? I'm asking this with not trying to be flip.
Yeah.
I just.
I have a day job, but I have complete discretion.
Yeah, I'm not trying to be flip at all. I just mean like.
No, I understand what you're saying.
Not flexible. And I don't want to do that to you guys either, because then it's nice.
Why don't?
It's fine for this, just keep that, can we keep it in mind moving forward when we?
Absolutely.
At 2:00.
The chair has requested that I make that announcement, so that's why I'm doing it.
Yeah, no, I know it's not you. And when I, because when I started, it was 4:00. And then it was 3:00. And now we're at 2:00, and I can't stay if it's going to be 2:00 all the time.
Okay. All right. We appreciate that. We do want to have your input, so we'll see if we can't make some accommodations for it.
Just so you're aware, the reason why we have not only a long agenda, no, this is, for October 13, we have one on Chat Harbor, one on Pleasant Street, a Formula Business, Ivy Lane's coming back, Capri Lane's coming back, and 322 and 324 Bridge Street are coming back. That's why we're starting at 2:00. Because we'll still be here till midnight?
All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Aye, so move.
Second. And roll call?
Roll call vote.
Buck votes yes.
Bill votes yes.
Megan votes yes.
All votes yes.
Dave Thompson votes yes.
Randy votes yes.
Dave Veach votes yes.
And it is what time?
5:12.
5:12. We stand adjourned.